There's some drainage areas where there may be um wetlands. And where there are wetlands that have an association with the Yakima River. They're they're given a little bit higher protection because the Yakima River being a shoreline of the state. Has shoreline master program requirements and and so on and so forth, but um. The the natural systems element identifies those things, but um. What we're we're talking about tonight is kind of the 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 narrative on. What Mapton has in its vicinity and within the the city limits and its urban growth area. As well as um. How that plays a role with the the development of the community because we need to make sure that those areas are protected. So um as we're going through the natural systems element, we'll see that. Uh there's a conversation that takes place within that element about. The critical areas, but it goes beyond that as well because it'll talk about air quality. It'll talk a little bit about water quality um and and I guess water quality is tied to that. Aqua recharge areas a little bit, but um the. The the baseline hasn't really changed since the last periodic update. Um going through the the um. What what I'd like to do tonight is kind of go through and and I'll share on my on my screen. What the element looks like and I have track changes up, so I have uh areas where there's. Um you know, conversations about. The potential for threatened and endangered species. Near near Mapton or within its UGA and it and it speaks to different studies that took place. I want to say somewhere like two thousand and three, some some are a little bit more modern or newer than that. But um I I wanted to make sure with this conversation that there isn't any sort of. Um known specific changes that you're aware of with things um because. The the it's it's really just updating some of the maps to reflect. New logos and and new identification of where potential flood plains and and wetlands and things like that are. But it really doesn't have any wide scale. Changes that are necessary like other parts of the comp plan, so for example. Um the the Growth Management Act has has made some significant changes to the housing element. And some of the land use element stuff that will be getting into first this winter. And the natural systems element and the administration element don't have any updates required by GMA. Um so I don't know if that was a lot of me rambling and and somewhere your question got answered in there um. But uh yeah, I mean that I mean I don't I don't know, I can't, you know. Say for sure if there's wetlands, I don't believe that there's any mapped streams in Mapton um. I don't. We look I'll have to look at the maps, I don't recall off the top of my mind. If you have floodplain and floodway, there there may be some in the GMA or in the GMA, the UGA. Let me see here, I got my paper. I got my paper copy here in front of me.
Barry, can you hear us?
Uh you're very quiet.
How about now?
A little bit. Hello?
I have a couple of comments on what you said.
Okay.
If flood here and mapped in any part of it. You would almost have to fill up the whole valley between our. Bridges and. The hill in Sunnyside. We had a flood, you know, I don't know, twenty years ago and. It uh it wouldn't have. Come close in a hundred year flood is not going to. But I um the floodplain, whatever they in the the map and but uh. I think they would have to have um. Ice dam or something. To block things up or anything that ever get connected. And I know we have critical wetlands down there, we have a we have one wetland. To the west of the bridge. That's classified as number one, I believe, in most critical in uh you know. Uh preservation. It right is is maybe a two, so we have those, but that's not their growth area.
Ri- right, yeah, and and um so if I can, let's see here, I I'll share. Let me find the document here, let's see. Here we go. Are are you able to see the document that I'm sharing on the screen?
Yes.
Let me turn. Let's see.
Is that part of our packet?
That's like first page.
Yes. That's in our packet.
Okay, so within this. So it goes through. Everything seems to be. Running a little bit slower than I would like um. So. Within the natural settings element here. There are some maps, let's see, one eighteen and page eighteen, one eighteen, there is a FEMA map. That shows where. There's floodplain and there is a little bit within the urban growth area. Uh it it looks like it kind of touches or follows along Boundary Road. Some, but on the west side, so it's not within city limits. Let's see, it should be this next. Somewhere in here, here we go.
What page is that on?
Uh in i- in the element, it's one dash eighteen. So if you're seeing my cursor here on the the far southwest corner is where. Floodplain impacts, it looks like it's maybe. Well, one one parcel for sure and then a little bit on. An adjacent one, but it's within the urban growth area. Um but as as we understand, the urban growth area is intended to one day be city limits.
Like I said, we need to have a some kind of a dam. Set up somewhere to our east before the water would back up that much.
Well, thi- this isn't water backing up, this is this is water coming from the hills. Like from from a rain on snow event or something like that.
Well, I realize that, but what I'm saying is that that uh in order for any water to get. Anywhere close to Mapton, they'd have to fill up the whole valley.
Right, right, yeah, and 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 by and large, it is an issue, it's just that. It's shown on the FEMA map, so I mean and and we're required to a- address the five critical areas, every single. City in town has to have a critical areas ordinance that address the five critical areas.
Yeah.
Yep, and that's and that's also something that we can discuss here in in a bit um. The state law changed a couple of years ago now. That allow so so it's allowed to have a city or town under twenty-five thousand people. Adopt the county that they're within their critical areas ordinance by reference and then all amendments. That would come thereafter and I'm going to be recommending that that Mapton do that. Um it really streamlines, I mean, well, A, you mentioned that. Mapton really doesn't have any critical areas, so it kind of makes sense to avoid having to. Have your own critical areas ordinance and be responsible for the administration of that. And then anytime some of the science changes behind wetlands or. Stream buffers or anything like that, the city would be responsible for updating that sort of a thing. But if we adopt the counties by reference, we just kind of follow along with. Their CAO and they're the ones that would be responsible. For making all of those updates and things and and what we would need to do. Is create an interlocal agreement, an ILA between the city of Mapton and Yakima County. On how the administration of that critical areas ordinance would work. Um so for example, say um you know, there there was a potential wetland. Ju- and this is just a a a you know, in theory, right? Say there was a potential wetland on a piece of property. And it needed to be reviewed under their critical areas ordinance, this interlocal agreement. Would stipulate that it would be the responsibility of the city to investigate that and make sure it. Was a mapping error and wasn't really a wetland instead of the county having to come in and do it. Because it's two separate jurisdictions, right, so the city's responsible for everything within the city and the county's responsible for everything outside of city limits. Um so that that sort of a thing, but um. That's, I mean, that that's kind of where the the natural settings, the the natural settings element has a lot of goals and policies that relate to. Protection of critical areas, but the but that doesn't need to be changed i- if we are still wanting to adopt the county CAO. Uh it's it's just a matter of um recognizing the the importance of the functions. And values that those different critical areas and and how the natural systems. Um and how land use and population growth can impact those.
Thank you.
So um. Well, since we're on the natural systems, I mean. So my my plan is to just kind of go through it, I've started. I don't know why that's highlighted, I'm trying to anyways um. What I've done is. Created little notes to to find, because um. I haven't gone through and updated all the references and everything yet, but identified the different. Parts of the natural systems element, while I'll be updating the the studies that they reference. Um I didn't see any really. Major changes that are necessary to the natural systems element. Um the countywide planning policies haven't changed, this is just showing um. Which ones apply to the natural systems element. So tho- that hasn't changed, relationships or relationship to other elements or land uses. Um after you had gotten your draft, I I added some. Language about the the climate element, which is a new element and we need to touch on. How there's some interrelation there, so I I added this sentence that. Climate-related hazards such as drought, flooding, wildfire and extreme temperatures impact both natural and built environments um. Critical area and resource lands um. So we're re- as I mentioned, we're required to identify and protect them and those are the five. Different types of critical areas that the the state has identified um. Natural resource lands, we I don't believe there are any of those within the city, there there is a um. Um what is it, there's a mineral designation on a piece of property. And it's not within the city or its UGA, but mineral resource areas. Uh they they have a larger buffer um that the county uses to to notify. Neighbors if there is a a mine that's open in that location or if there's rock crushing or something that happens. Uh and that it's five hundred feet and um I think that five hundred foot buffer. Partially comes into the urban growth area and and there's a map. Um within the natural systems element that shows that. Um. As I mentioned, that that we're just kind of going through and identifying. The natural systems that exist within Mapton, kind of give the background of where it is in the landscape, right um. Best available science, so um here's where. There's a statement about how the city adopted a critical areas ordinance back in two thousand and ten. One of the things that would end up changing if. The city adopts the counties is this would just be language that gets changed to reflect that. Um best available science, right now, the county is. Going through the process to up the bu- update their best available science, what it. What best available science really is 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 a a bunch of um. Studies that have been done oftentimes with the Department of Ecology or the Department of Fish and Wildlife. Where they they identify how science has changed, like for example, um. The Department of Fish and Wildlife changed how stream buffers are calculated. It it used to be, excuse me. It used to be where. You'd have a stream type and that stream type would have a static buffer, so a type three stream may have a seventy-five foot buffer associated with it. The Department of Fish and Wildlife has updated their recommendations to be the um, so you look at. The stream where it is in the landscape, so a stream. In Yakima County and Mapton is going to be, say, different than if it were in. Seattle or Port Angeles or something like that and you look at the. Tallest tree or the 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 type of tree that's common to that area. And you're supposed to identify the the height of that tree if it were. I want to say like two hundred years old or something like that, you know, like trees can, some trees can live a long time. But may maybe it's a maturity, I'd have to review the science, but the the buffer width is the height of that tree. So if the tree falls over, it creates habitat with all of its branches and everything like that. So that's what your buffer is supposed to be, so science around these things changes, so. A lot of things may have changed since two thousand and six and the county is going through that best available science. Review process right now, um so once they're complete, once they've completed that, we'll be updating. This reference here. Existing conditions, so this is a discussion on the soil types and the soil soil types really don't change. Um and then thi- this here is just taken from. The Soil Survey, I don't know if you've ever looked at one of those books, it's it's just a big. Uh it looks like a phone book almost, just like a white cover on it in a in a picture. Um but this is taken from that. Then here's. A map showing the different soil types. So the the what's shown on the map won't change, just that the the maps will be. Updated, um you know, there may be additional streets that were built or or lots that have been subdivided, right? So we'll we'll just be updating the maps to to reflect that.
Yeah, we don't have that.
Nope.
You know. So we'll.
Then water resources, it there is a conversation about groundwater, so it talks about how the Yakima Basin is divided into six different. Groundwater basins all going all the way up to the pass. Uh. Critical aqua recharge areas, so um that's basically. When it rains or there there's snow that melts into the ground or even um. You know, um when when people. Have septic systems, some of that goes, you know, it's treated, but it goes back into the groundwater depending on where you are. Uh it it speaks to some of those areas and how susceptible to contamination they may be. Um generally, the the quicker water flows through the soil, the more. Susceptible to contamination the groundwater is, because it's the a lot of times, you know, it's the bacteria. And other microbes and stuff in the soil that that treat whatever may be in in the water before it hits groundwater. So it talks to that some um. Then I have a note for this one, it says watershed assessment performed by the Yakima Basin Water Resource Agency in two thousand and three. Noted that groundwater quality can be affected by a wide variety of activities. So one of the things I'll be doing is making sure that there isn't a more recent publication or study from this, but. Um there really shouldn't be any changes. But it's just if there's a two thousand and twenty-three study, we want to make sure that that's referenced. Then um there's a section where it speaks to um. No well depths and and this is throughout the the river basin, it says. Fifty percent of all wells are less than a hundred and fifty-one feet deep. So the shallower the well, the more susceptible to contamination it is. Um not I'm and I'm not saying that all of this is going to like. The the city of Mapton has deeper wells, right, and and they're municipal wells, so this is just more of a. A discussion about the groundwater. Throughout Yakima County and then how Mapton fits within that. So surface, so it speaks to surface water and there there really. Wasn't a whole lot of. Changes that I saw. Um being necessary. So here's the the critical offer recharge. Map and this is something where um. Oh, the way that. Carers are regulated, it relies on state and federal requirements typically, so. Um you know, when somebody is getting a a large development permit, they need. Construction stormwater general permits, so those stormwater general permits are to make sure that. Stormwater doesn't run off the site because it may be contaminated, they need to maintain it on site and. And if you are. Building a gas station, there's state requirements and federal requirements that you have the the fuel tanks. Line in a certain way around the pump stations, there's usually a berm or something like that, so if it. You know, if we get a a heavy rain, it doesn't pick up all the. The oil and stuff from cars being parked there and running off and into a. A ditch or a stream or something like that, so there's a lot of. State and federal requirements related to things that protect groundwater quality and that's what we lean on. But this is a map showing um the contamination susceptibility, right, so in the Mapton area, it looks like. Moderate. Is how it's um identified here on the east side of town, it doesn't look like there's much in the UGA um. At all, really, up near your water treatment plant, up on the north side of the UGA a little bit, but. Mostly on the east side of town, but once again. There there isn't really anything that needs to change to address that within the comp plan. Or the development regulations really because the state and the federal regulations um. Are exist to protect those areas. Here's a map of waterways and wetlands. As you mentioned, there really aren't. Any in town or the UGA. And a lot of these. Category three wetland things like that, so when and and this is an old map, so this is relying on the county's data. And it it it's really changed, so historically, wetland um categories. Were identified kind of in advance and it was things like based on the the size of the wetland. If there were certain types of tr- species, so I know if there's like a a. I think it's if there's an aspen grove in a wetland, it's protected because those are a little bit more uncommon and things like that. But since this has been, since this has likely been mapped, the State Department of Ecology, who's the the state agency and. That that's in charge of administering protecting wetlands, they've updated their guidance. And uh the the category or the classification of the wetland has a lot more to do with. Its functions, how it functions in the whole um water system, you know, so. If it's a larger wetland that isn't impacted and and helps with being a sponge during a storm event. Or if it does a really good job filtering um. Surface water before it hits the river or before it's soaks into the ground. It'll likely get a higher classification or be a higher category um. And it it's um or it's high protection, yeah.
But can you move your map more towards the north?
Yes.
That's where they. There it is.
Thank you.
And then, yeah, thi- this along here is the river bottom. So I think there's the the bluff that kind of follows here and the Yakima River flows in here. In the northwest corner of this map. Yeah, so here's the shoreline master program designations. We don't have any shorelines within the the city or the UGA. The only exception is that if if there is a wetland, so if you remember, there's that floodplain that came along. Boundary road here and and went it would flow north to the river. Um if there's a wetland located in that floodplain somewhere. Not saying that there is, but if there were to be one, that would fall under regulation of. The the shoreline master program rather than the critical areas ordinance. And then these these designations here, just so you're aware of what they mean, there's different, it it's kind of like zoning. But it's related to the river, so when you have a conservancy environmental designation means that it's. And and natural means that it's a really natural part of the river and they want to. Avoid development right along the river as much as possible to keep the river as natural as possible um. But I believe everything around Mapton is the rural designation, which is the orangish orangish color. And that recognizes that there's historical development and in the in the lower valley, it's agriculture. By and large. Surface water quality um. These are kind of the the. Indicators that are looked at when you're looking at the the that health of water, I suppose. Um or there there's um water quality issues, it's typically temperature, so there's certain species of fish. Like the 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 trout and. Like the 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 trout and some of the salmon require really cold water. So that's where temperature comes into play dissolved oxygen is um. When you have rapids and and waters kind of tumbling and stuff, the the um. The the oxygen dissolves into the water and and you need that for fish, right? Um. Nutrients, um, so nutrients, the higher the nutrients typically is a bad thing um. When it speaks to this, because it means that there's likely um fertilizers and things that are in the water and that. Causes a lot of al- algae blooms. Um, so that's what nutrients are there. Um, fecal indicator, you know, fecal coliform, that's failing septic systems or animal waste, that sort of a thing. Sediments and turbidity, that's just, you know, like in the springtime when the water's flooding, it's brown. It's because of all the dirt and everything that's in it, that's what what that's referring to. And then, of course, pesticides are self-explanatory. Um, here I have a comment just seeing, um, just wanting to update the references because it was last looked at in two thousand and three. See if there's anything newer, um, see if. Some of these things like PCBs, pesticides, elevated temperatures, s- see how. Um, those still rank. References DDT, I mean, that may not be an issue anymore. I know I know that. You know, that that's what like the the whole sixties and seventies with the bald eagles and stuff like that. Um, the DDT and and the that book Silent Spring had to deal with um, how DDT. Cause the eggshells to be really weak, so when the birds would sit on their eggs, they'd break. Um. Clean Clean Water Act reference um. This document here, like a nineteen ninety-seven document. So just, like I said, a lot of it's just trying to update the different references. Floodplanes, spoke about that a little bit. Um, this is the breakdown of how FEMA has things, there's no floodway. Within Mapten or the UGA, there's no zone AE um. On but one of the things I need to look at, because I know that some of the. Least in the upper valley along the Tannum Wide Hollow area, the floodplain maps were updated in two thousand and sixteen. And I'm not sure if they updated the ones in your part of the world. Um, because zone A is what that map shows. And that is um showing that they don't have a base flood elevation. So. All the so base flood elevation, um, it's really a a mathematical exercise. They look at the hundred year event. So it's a like, it's not something that happens once every hundred years. It means that there's a one percent chance of it happening and um, they look at. How much water comes down like in rain or snow, like what the volume of water is going to be during that event. And the floodplain is usually mapped where those water levels are a foot deep. And that base flood elevation is that that point in the landscape showing that, okay. You know, it's a minimum of a foot deep, but it might be six feet deep here, might be two feet deep here. But they're looking at what the 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 depth of the water would be. Within that that whole floodplain and they know that because they've modeled it and mapped it. Zone A um is just kind of um. I don't want to say back of the napkin math. Because it's it's way more than that, but it's just not at that level of detail that shows what that base flood elevation is. And so what base flood elevation means in the real world is when somebody is building a house. Or um, you know, moving dirt around and things like that, they need to be a a aware for that for construction standards. So typically, if you're building a house, your your bottom floor needs to be twelve inches above. Base flood elevation. So if it if it were flooding, um, you wouldn't. See a huge loss of value, you know, a lot of damage to your property. And and that's where flood insurance comes into play and things like that. Um, let's see. Yeah, and here's a statement, you know, it's the Mapton area has seen. River and stream flowing uh overflow for flooding, flash flooding and then standing water. So if water just kind of. Pools up somewhere um. But it it identifies or or recognizes that the the river flooding, I mean, it would. We'd be in a lot of trouble if Mapten had the river flooding, as you're as you're saying, it would have to be dammed up. Or one of the dams uh like. The uh Rimrock or one of the the dams on Soqualmie would need a break or something like that. Here's that floodplain map. Wetlands, it it this speaks about uh. How a a wetland is identified, yeah, it's a very specific set of criteria. Wetlands need to have, um, there there's three criteria. You need to have um the right kinds of soils, the right kinds of vegetation. And then hydrology, which is the water needs to exist there. Um, so that's why wetlands is, you know. Uh, I was saying that the maps are kind of an indicator, but the only way to know for sure is to go to the site. Um, because a lot of times what may look like a wetland is um, an unlined irrigation ditch. That if it's a, you know, higher bank and it seeps out the bottom of it and you get. Some kind of grasses that grow tall or there may be cattails that show up there or something like that. And it's all irrigation, it's not really natural. Um, so so those are the the reasons why we got to look at each potential wetland individually. Rather than just looking at a map where it's typically from, you know, high elevation aerial photograph. Yeah, and here here's where it references that um. It was from the National Wetland Inventory map. So it it's known to be inaccurate. I mean, I I bu- I know that um, so just taking a step back. Prior to being with YV cog, I worked with the Akama County for sixteen years and I was um, my my. Primary or where I started out, I guess, was environmental natural resources planning. So. I was the guy that went out and looked at people's properties for wetlands and. Looked at streams for the ordinary high watermark and things like that. And the mapping system. Has all of the open surface canals mapped as wetlands because with these nineteen eighties. Aerial images, they just saw water. So they're like, oh, if there's water, there's got to be a wetland and we know that's not true. But it just goes to show that the the maps are known not to be accurate. Air quality, um, this is where there'll be a need to update some of it. I believe the um, some of the particulate matter stuff and the the CO stuff. Is no longer an issue um, working with our our. Transportation program. Um, they have some funding that um, what is it? It's. It's it's C Mac, it's like congestion mitigation and air quality. But it's 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 basically when you're idling in traffic, there's pollutants right from idling cars. And there was a list of pollutants that were related to that. And a couple of them dropped off that we don't need to worry about anymore. I mean, as as from as far as like an administration standpoint, and I believe that it was. Carbon monoxide and it might be PM ten. So PM ten is um particulate matter. And I believe it's ten micron, so it's basically the the size of what's in the air. So whether it's. Um, you know, pollen or soot or dust from different types of soils or what have you. Um, that's what that refers to. Talks about how air quality is monitored. So EPA, Department of Ecology, Yakima Regional Clean Air. Uh, authority, I believe it's, I want to say it's, it might be agency now. So that see, that's where I'm I'm adding my notes here. I don't know if you see those on your your handouts. But as I'm going through things, that's where um, I'm writing little notes to myself to. Make sure that's all correct. And it discusses each of the different things, right? Um, we get into plants and wildlife. How we're um arid step of the Columbia Basin Province, so it's. How it's all mapped out with the different eco-regions and things like that. Um, speaks to endangered threatened species from from plants um. And the Department of Fish and Wildlife keeps a list of. The different threatened endangered species um, broken down by county, so loo- look to see what. May have dropped off this list or what may have been added to that list. Uh, but but really it has very little impact on Mapten proper or the UGA because a lot of it is. The undisturbed shrub step that's on the hills to the south and or and around the area. Wildlife speaks to the different um, animals. Fish. You can see here, it's all tied to the Akama River, at least for the fish. Because you guys don't have any streams. Um, natural resource lands and critical areas, agricultural lands. There's discussion of agricultural use, um, but. Agricultural use doesn't equal agricultural lands by how the Growth Management Act looks at it. Um, they're they're looking to identify commercial or agricultural lands of long-term commercial significance. So it's it's a lot of the the resource lands that the economies are based off of. And those aren't really applicable within a city, right? So um. While I it's talked about how some lands are in active agricultural use, so somebody may um. You know, be be hanging their property or there may be some grapes or something like that. Um, they're not designated for agricultural long-term significant significance. If it's within the city, the idea is that we'd see urban levels of development within the next twenty years. I mean, and and that twenty-year period is just, I mean, that's how the the Growth Management Act says we need to plan for growth, but. Um, of course, it's it's um. I mean, people, it's, people are able to do what they want with their property that. Just because you have uh land in the city or the urban growth area doesn't mean you have to do anything but continue to farm it. Then you can see here, this is where it's showing the agricultural land use. So where we had that new beginning subdivision because it was a hay field. They identified it as agricultural use, right? Um, some of the areas. Um, this is the school property that, so this would be Arts Fox Elementary right here. And the field um, to the east of that. Where the where the flower farm is. And then this is. That area of industrial land, but it's just where air agricultural use is, they're not agricultural lands. Forest lands, um, unless a tree's been planted, you don't have net, you know, you don't have a forest in Mapten. And then min- mineral lands, um, this stems from, I want to say right around the year two thousand. The the county worked with the Department of Natural Resources to create. Uh, a map showing mineral resource lands for this process and it's where. Um, it was either uh because of like the Missoula floods and things like that. There's good gravel deposits or there's good basalt rock where. A mining company could come in and break it up and use it for road beds or whatever else may be needed for that. And then this, this map shows the geologic hazards as well as the mineral resource sites, you know, excuse me. Don't don't have any um. Geologically hazardous areas that I see um, along, this is. Up here, this is stream undercutting. This is just where the Yakima River is. So if the the river. Erodes um, the the hillside there and that's stream undercutting, so there's a chance of it sloughing off, but. None of that's even within the UGA. And then down here, these are the mineral resource sites. So this is the one where um. Looks like at the corner of Stetner and Gildan, there's a mineral resource site that's been identified, it has a little dog leg. And that that um, red mark is the um, five hundred foot buffer. And it does look like there's a little bit in the urban growth area um, just that dog leg park part. Let's see, wetlands shows that there's no wetlands that are mapped within the city or the UGA. Critical aqua recharge areas, we've talked about that, fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. Um, most times that's streams in their buffers. Could also be upland wildlife habitat and there's a little uh mention of Townsend's ground squirrel. Frequently flooded areas. Geo-hazards. And then the goals and policies. So this is where um. Things may change a little bit if we adopt the the county's CAO. Um, I didn't want to make any changes until that decision's made though. Um, so. Just establishing critical areas protection measures to protect environmentally sensitive areas and protect people. And property from hazards um, and it says to use best available science and ensure that. Subdivisions and other development um, don't impact. Those critical areas and and protect people from the hazards that are associated with those critical areas. But without um. A lot of critical areas within the city, it's really moot. Um, I've I've been with the cog for. About three and a half years and in that time, I've I've not processed a critical areas permit from Mapten. Um, think the only city that I've processed one for is City of Union Gap. And that's because they've got a Tannum Creek and White Hollow Creek and. Bachelor Creek and stuff like that because they're where they're situated in the valley. And I take that and I helped tie it in with one because they've got North Fork Koichi Creek there as well. Caras um. So preserving groundwater quality. And the policies related to that. And I don't think that if. We adopt the county CAO, we'll really need to make any changes. We'll just want to make sure that um. Instead of the establishing critical area protection measures, um, it'd be more along the lines of um. You know, administering the the protection measures. That are within the county CAO or within, you know, the county CAO adopted by reference to ensure that. The the critical areas are protected. Surface water, same thing, enhance the quantity and quality of surface water. You really don't have surface water features within Mapten, but. Surface water features within Mapten, but. You know, with that flood plain, if there was a flood happening, there would be surface water, so making sure that. Um, you know, we don't plop down a, a gas station in the middle of that flood plain or something. Restore, maintain, or enhance the quality of the Akam River Basin's surface water. I'm just kinda going through the goals, um. I won't take up your time with the policies, I, we're already an hour in, so I don't, I don't wanna um have you falling asleep on me. Stormwater, um, prevent increased flooding from stormwater runoff. Improve water quality through improved stormwater management. Fish and wildlife habitat, uh, provide for the maintenance protection of habitat areas for fish and wildlife. Policies are what that looks like. Goal eight is conserve, protect, and enhance the function values of stream corridors. Frequently flooded areas, prevent the loss of life or property and minimize. Public and private costs associated with repairing or preventing flood damages. Uh, basically goes to trying to avoid. A bunch of development in the floods path that'll be damaged from it, need to be repaired. Wetlands. Long-term protection, no net loss, geo-hazards. Pretty much protecting people from the, the hazards there and then shorelines. Uh, just a reference to adopting the county's shoreline master program. So that's the natural systems element, um, it's, it's really kind of talking about the natural environment that. Is where um Mapten is or how Mapten fits within the, the greater Yakima Valley area. And the different components of that natural environment. Do you have any questions for me on that? Any, any thing that you want? Seen changed or added, things that you think would be important to, to have a conversation about that I could. Make some changes and, and bring that back to you?
What changes do we need to make in our critical areas ordinance?
So um.
Is updating things?
Yeah, so, so let me, let me find, let's see here. So, um. There is. So with, with the, the periodic update, they created periodic update checklists. So it's, it's this document that summarizes all of the, the things that need to be within. Your critical areas ordinance, so designation of critical areas. Um, it asks, you know, was the BAS's best available science, was BAS documented in the record? For the review and updates, the critical areas regulations, yes, and then where definitions of critical areas. Um, will need to update definitions if we choose to, to update the CAO rather than adopting the counties. Does it address no net loss and require compensatory mitigation? Yes. Um, and, and I haven't, I haven't gotten into the, the critical area stuff yet and making the changes, yeah.
Sorry, quick question. Who makes the decision whether or not we go with the county? Or whether or not we sit and go through this ourselves and make changes if any?
Ultimately, it's city council to make that, to, to make that decision. My, my recommendation is going to be to adopt the counties by reference. Because it's simpler and is less work for the city, so you don't need as ma- you don't need to use as many resources.
Right, right, so if that is the city council primarily. And we don't need to provide input, then I think it's moot, isn't it?
For the, for the critical areas component, yes, the natural systems element, it's still um worthwhile having that. Within the comprehensive plan in order to um show that it's been analyzed. And um, the, that's all been taken into consideration. When deciding how to protect them, so I think with the, the natural systems element. Going through and, and updating some of those reference documents, if, if they have been updated. But otherwise, just leaving it basically as is, is what I would recommend. And then I would also recommend that the, the city adopt the county CAO by reference.
Certainly.
Cause I, I mean, simple is good, right? And, and having your own CAO. I think for larger jurisdictions or where. There are more complicated critical areas within a jurisdiction, it might be beneficial. But Mapten really doesn't have any and um. It, it save the, any sort of confusion or, or miscommunication about critical areas for um. This, not only the citizens, but future development.
Okay, and did you say you were going to look at whatever? Updates may be needed in the natural resources areas?
Yeah, yeah, so what I've, what I've done so far is just gone through and identified. Where the natural systems element references other documents. And I'm going to be digging in or looking at those documents to see if what's referenced is the most recent. Version of that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so, so this is really just uh to start introducing you to how we're going to be looking at the different. Elements, cause the, the city has seven, I guess eight different elements if you include the climate element. And the two that I wanted to speak to tonight are ones that. Don't have any real major changes associated with them. The um, over the next couple of months, November and December, we'd be looking at the. Capital facilities element, the utilities element, and the transportation element. So those, those are a little bit more complicated and they have um some changes that would be necessary. Within the GMA. Um, but I didn't, um, the way I have it formulated is kinda this, these are the low-hanging fruit. And gets everybody kinda in the mindset of what it's going to look like and how we're going to be approaching this. And um, prior to finalizing drafts, I wanted to bring things in front of. Well, I need to bring things in front of the planning commission to have you accept them before. Um, taking them to, to city council, so um, this is really just like a study session. In, in the future, we'll, we'll be having a, you know, a hearing on it. When we have more of the, the, the draft in a final version or final form.
Okay.
Cause then, so once, so the, the, taking a step back to look at the overall process. Because there's so much, it's, it's the, it's the eight different elements of your comprehensive plan, but it's also your zoning ordinance. Your subdivision ordinance, and then this periodic update is a critical areas ordinance, which. Even if we adopt it um by reference, there's still that agreement that needs to take place with the county, but. All of that is gonna be brought in front of the planning commission. And there'll be opportunity for, for the public to participate as well, but um. With the draft stuff, and then we'll have hearings on it to um get feedback from. Members of the public, uh, Department of Fish and Wildlife, Department of Ecology. There'll, there'll be opportunities for other agencies and things like that to comment on the different elements. And then when we have the hearing, the planning commission would make a re- a recommendation. That um it be approved in that draft form, and from that, we send it all to the. State Department of Commerce, they have a sixty-day uh period where they're reviewing things. To make sure that the changes that we've made are, are good with how the laws have changed. And then from there, after that sixty-day period has ended, if Commerce doesn't come back with any needed changes or corrections. Then it goes to ci- it'll go to city council and then they'll, they'll be adopting it. And the, the deadline to get everything adopted is December thirty-first of next year. So um. We've got, what is that, like fourteen months to get through all of this stuff? And it seems like a long time, but I mean with just a monthly meeting. There, there's just a lot that we need to be bringing in, in front of you, so I'm trying to do like little chunks. As we go and bringing things in front of you as we go.
Okay.
But um, yeah, so this, this is the, the. The, the critical areas checklist, so this is all the different changes that have been made. But that, that's what we would be using to review the CAO to see if um it meets the current standards. But if, if council adopts it by reference, then we don't need to worry about that at all.
Okay.
Did you all have any questions on the natural systems element?
What, I have one. All, all our city water, the, the drinkable water comes from subsurface. But it seems like taking care of that aquifer is beyond our control. Are you guys doing anything to protect?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, hope, someone's at my door really quick, I apologize, my dog's going crazy, once, one second please. Sorry about that. Um, so your question was about. The critical aqua recharge areas and the groundwater contamination, a lot of that happening outside of. The severe of influence of Mapten?
Yes.
So um, that's, yeah, um. That, that's true, that the county has the critical aqua recharge area requirements as well. And that's where the, the largest impact is going to be seen, um. But the, the way that it's approached at the, the state level is, it's, it's very broadly based. In order to reduce the impacts throughout, throughout the state. So um. I mean, the, the requirements for. The critical aqua recharge areas are, are statewide, um. And I don't, I mean, beyond that, I don't know how much can really be, be done. I mean, what, what Mapten does isn't going to have a huge impact on what the dairies out in the coun- countryside. Would be doing, but it would be a reliance on the county to, to administer their CAO and make sure that. The dairies are using the best available science with lining the lagoons and, and making sure that any sort of. Nutrients applied at agronomic rates and stuff like that. But I, yeah, I don't, I mean, there, I mean, yeah, I mean, it, it's not like. I mean, Hera has to have uh the same process and go through their codes as well and, and. And they're not gonna have an impact on groundwater quality with, you know, um, but it's just something that everybody has to have. So that. In theory, the, the impacts to groundwater would um. Be, be minimized or, or stopped in order to improve groundwater quality over time.
Thank you.
Well, if, if there aren't any more questions, I'll, I'll quickly go through the administration element, it's seven pages long. Um, it really is more about how to process, so um. What we're doing right now is the, the periodic update for the comprehensive plan, which is a ten-year cycle. You are allowed to update your comprehensive plan once per year. And, and um, the reason why is um. Only once per year is cause Commerce doesn't wanna get a bunch of. Changes scattered throughout the year, it's supposed to be reviewed comprehensively and, on how it impacts your community. And this goes through kind of the, the um process for doing that and the timeline for doing that. Um, and then it also addresses the future land use map. Um, and that has more to do with, with the zoning. Uh, but I'll just quickly go through here, uh, a, a lot of. Uh, what I changed in this document was the references, it, it used to be a, a. An eight-year update period and it changed to the ten-year. So it goes through, sorry, what the GMA requirement, so uh, the administration element. Is consistent for evaluating the plans and development regulations, reviewing your UGA and um. Housing densities or population densities, making sure you're maintaining um. Compliance or conforming with the GMA requirements, make sure that your. Development regulations, the zoning and subdivision and stuff like that. Are consistent with the goals and the policies within the comprehensive plan, um. Looking at the amendments to the, the comprehensive plan all at the same time. So the cumulative effects can be analyzed, so that'd be like if you wanted to um. I'm just trying to think, like, change what kind of uses are allowed within the community and. Um, or, or if there was, I'll say. Highway twenty-two is gonna be upgraded, or a new rail line is gonna go in, or you wanted to put in an airport or something like that. All of that stuff would need to be updated within a comprehensive plan to be able to address those sort of impacts. Um, here's the timing, so as I mentioned, it's supposed to be once a year, so. Uh, it states in here, city of Mapten sets the month of July to add, to begin advertising for requests to the comprehensive plan. Typically, it's something where there's a legal notice in the newspaper saying that. We're opening the comprehensive plan up to community-led uh changes. Um, there can be staff-led changes as well, so if there's something that members of the planning commission or members of the um. City council or, or um, you know, say the police chief or something like that, and they're like, oh, we need a new police station. We can go in and look at capital facilities and things like that and, and make sure everything. Um, is reflective of, of the community's plan over the next so many years. So we, we start that in July. And then October is the month for consideration by the planning commission, so we would probably have um. July, like, say we'll let people submit comments for the month of July or July and August, something like that. Then we would review them and put together staff reports. Start looking at what sort of impacts those proposed amendments would have, um, and then um, it would be. Like my, myself or someone from my staff reviewing that and creating a staff report for planning commission to look at. And then in, in October is when the hearing would be held, and as I mentioned, there's the sixty-day Commerce. Notification period, same thing has to happen with, with any sort of amendment, so the hearing at the planning commission would be in October. Um, then in, guess, November and, and De- December. Um, where, however that sixty days falls out, and then city council would have a hearing on it. It says in, in December, um. To, to have that process, so it's, it can be a lengthy process depending on what sort of proposed changes there are. Um, you know, an example I've seen just to give you an idea is city of Grandview has. Um, minimum lot sizes written into their comprehensive plan, it's, it's not really the appropriate place for that to be, but uh. When, when they updated their, their, their comp plan sometime in the past, they had those. And they had a developer that was interested. And they had a developer that was interested in building some higher density apartment buildings. But the land that they owned, they couldn't make the, make it pencil out with the densities that the city had. So they, they went in and they requested the, there'd be a, a change to the zoning ordinance. But when they found out that it was in the comprehensive plan, they had to take a step back and they had to do an amendment to the comprehensive plan first because you can't change the zoning ordinance with, out it being changed in the comprehensive plan because it needs to be consistent, right? So it um, was something that it took quite a while between them submitting for the comprehensive plan amendment, going through that process, having uh, uh, they had a hearing, they don't have a planning commission or they didn't. So it was in front of their hearings examiner. And then the, the sixty day notice to commerce and then it went in front of city council. And city council decided that they liked how things were and they denied the request. But they still had to go through that entire process. Um, because that's, that's what it takes. So that's what this timeline is. Um, let's see, accepted at any time of the year, but the review of them is October, November and December. Uh, when that's being done, we create and circulate a public participation program. So basically how we're going to engage and let the community know that these changes are proposed. Um, no more than once per year. Uh, there, there's an exception for emergencies, um, but that's typically like um, your police station burnt down and it's not in your capital facilities element to replace it. So you need to add it to the capital facilities element because that triggers the ability to use certain sorts of funding. Um, let's see. Then just updating reference to, to ten years from seven years. Um, how this plan um, is good for ten years. So it goes through June thirtieth of twenty thirty-six. Uh, here's the um, uh, where is it here? Adoption and initiation. Public hearing. Kind of goes, it did, basically goes through the process, what I said, um, you know, the sixty day comment period. Notice to neighbors, if it's a specific piece of land, the neighbors within three hundred feet. Planning commission recommendation. So when, when you review it, what that looks like. The state review, excuse me. Then after council adopts it, um, the, the adopting ordinance gets sent back to commerce so they can close out their end of the process. Appeals, what that would look like. If some, so say you go through this process and um, somebody doesn't like something that's in it, or they, they feel like it doesn't go far enough, they can appeal it if they have standing. So growth management hearings board and then superior court. Then here's the criteria to approve a change in the future land use map. That's where um, you know, say you have residential piece of land and somebody wants to put it into a commercial development. Well, if the future land use map is residential, um, they can't just go from a residential designation to a commercial designation. Um, from the zoning, they would need to change the future land use map first because um, oftentimes there, there are different zoning districts. So um, Mapton has R one and R two, right? And kind of like the um, Lux, where the Lux subdivision is and um, uh, I forget what they, I think it was foresight or something like that. When they changed it from R one to R two, um, just north of Arts Fox Elementary School. They didn't have to change the comprehensive plan at all because the, the future land use map designation was already residential. And you have those two different zoning districts that implement the residential designation. But they, initially they were asking about gas stations and things like that. And they weren't allowed to do that because of the future land use map designation. Um, they would have had to change that to commercial, which we likely wouldn't want a commercial designation just north of the school in the middle of a residential neighborhood off of a side street, right? You'd want the commercial off of one of the main streets or off of um, highway twenty-two or, or something like that. That's designed for that heavier commercial traffic. So this is just looking at that process to change that future land use map designation. And a lot of this stuff's me being frustrated with word and trying to figure out formatting. But that's, that's the administration element. Basically how the comprehensive plan and development regulations um, get updated, not only through the periodic update process, but through the annual process that can be done for text amendments and things like that. In the future land use map can be uh, done at any time. Any questions on that?
We just need to make updates in our plan.
Yeah, um, yeah, this is, this is just going through and cleaning things up from the last periodic update. A lot of it's formatting, changing, you know, it's not, it's no longer seven year update. It's a ten year update. And then changing the dates that, that apply. Um, and it's formatting just to keep things consistent. There, there, there wasn't any substantive change to this at all. It was all formatting. Like a change, like it's no longer the state department of community trade and economic development. It's just the department of commerce. So making changes like that.
We're good.
Okay, um, uh, it's seven thirty, um. Is there anything else you'd like to talk about? Um, I, I can tell you, uh, so last night, the, the um, Yakima County Planning Commission, they had a hearing on your urban growth area boundary, if you remember that. Um, I wonder if, let's see here. Um, um, hold on one minute. I can, I can bring up the staff report here. The, the county staff report. Okay, so this is, I won't bore you with all this stuff. It's basically looking at the acres of land, your population growth. This is where it had the negative growth. And there was a discussion on how like their, their planning commission called planning staff out on negative growth and negative, how do you get to negative acres and stuff like that? So their, their math is an exercise in math. It's not reality on the ground of, of the development that Mapton is seeing. Um, but what they did look at and, and decide upon, because if you recall, we talked about, I, I brought up removing the industrial parcel to the very south of town. Um, out of the urban growth area and bringing that forty acre piece in next to where New Beginnings and Genoa's Paradise subdivisions were. Once I get through all this, there's, I promise there's maps at the bottom. Here we go. Um, so here, so um, removing this area to the south and then adding this area to the north. And then this is where Genoa's paradise is. Here's New Beginnings, right? Here's the Lux subdivision. Over here's the Scarlet Estates or Parker Estate subdivision down here. But um, so planning commission asked the planning staff, because the, being, this is the county process. It's not the city process. Um, their planning commission asked if the county had reached out to these property owners yet about removing them from the urban growth area and adding them to the growth area. And the planning staff had not done that yet to get feedback from the property owners. So what the planning commission's recommendation was, is to leave this in the industrial area and add this to the urban growth area because of the pattern of development.
Byron, can you share that map?
I'm sorry?
Could you share the map? It's still on the other.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
I think, hold on, I need to update what I'm sharing. I apologize. I thought you were seeing what I was seeing. And here I am like waving my cursor all over the place. Can?
There it goes. Yes.
Okay, so um, it was okay, so it was to remove this area and add this area. And what they're, what the county's planning commission did in reviewing the, the county staff report is they departed from the staff recommendation and made the recommendation to leave this within the urban growth area designated as industrial and add this to the U G A and designate it um, R ten five, which is a, a rural designation. But when um, I, I believe, let's see here. Yeah, that, that's the current designation. They would um, designate it as R one residential. So when, if this property owner would like to continue development, um, or have it be residential development, they would be able to do so and match the, the, you know, the lot sizes and everything that we're seeing in New Beginnings. And then that, if you recall, we had that half and, and you know, not the full width of that right of way being built along the eastern property that would be able to be finished and have high school road come up and connect with, I guess it'd be Washington, because it'd be within city limits. But um, that, that was the, their planning commission rec- recommendation last night. So they'll, the next step for them is uh, uh, going to be reaching out to those property owners about bringing it into the U G A. And then I would imagine they're still going to ask about removing it. Um, whether or not that property owner wishes to remove it. The reason that we, we requested it to be removed was so be, because there's adequate capacity in Mapton's um, city and urban growth area for the projected population change. There's no real reason why there needs to be any addition to the urban growth area. So that's why we, we were doing a, a swap. So effectively the urban growth area wasn't changing in size. But the planning commission recommended to, to enlarge it by about thirty-seven acres to allow for additional residential development in this neighborhood.
Do we need to do anything about that?
Nope.
But before we, we moved to, we move one hand another, but we don't have to do anything.
Nope, it, because it's, it's, it's outside of the jurisdiction of the city. So this is all county jurisdiction. It's, it's all their decision. Um, what um, so if you remember, I brought it up and had a conversation with the planning commission about it. I also had a conversation with uh, the mayor about it. And I'm, I'm trying to remember if it was at a council meeting or it might've been at a separate meeting. But um, there, there was support for it. So it's, it's a county decision. Ultimately, it's the board of county commissioners that are responsible for making this change. But having the support of the city and the proposed change does, does help. Um, and I've communicated that to the county staff and the county planning commission. And when this comes in front of the board of county commissioners, all, also indicate that the city supports this proposal. But it, it's nothing that, that the city has zero say in what happens in this process. It's just a matter of supporting or opposing it. But it, I mean, it was something that, it was our, it was my, my, my recommendation with the mayors to add, add that um, in order to facilitate that development though. Otherwise, I don't think the county would have proposed that. They would have left it as is. And I want to make sure, I mean, it seems like there's a lot of interest in development in Mapton and I didn't want to um, I, I feel like adding this would allow that to continue because it seems like this is the area right off of, you know, between Euclid and high school there, Washington and Euclid, or Washington and high school where there's a lot of that development going in. It's where water lines are. It's where sewer lines are. Um, it's pretty, pretty close to, to downtown. So hopefully it, it spurs some interest in, in businesses and some, some retail and commercial downtown as well. Um, but, but yeah, that, that's, that was just last night. So I wanted to share that with the planning commission here.
We need to take any action tonight?
Um, I don't, I don't believe so because I don't have, I mean, it, the, it, the, the elements are a work in progress. Um, I do plan on um, making those changes to those elements and I'll um, and I'll, I'll likely be providing, so I have um, deliverables for the contract where the first set of deliverables is the, the draft natural systems element and administration element. And um, I'll likely be communicating with, with commerce on getting those um, drafts submitted. I mean, there, nothing's finalized right until the um, council adopts them. So they're, they're all going to be works in progress until that time. Um, but is, this was really more about showing you what I was doing with the natural systems element and the administration element and what it's going to look like going back and forth. Um, there, there will be, once we get into some of the development regulations, uh, there, there'll be some feedback that I'll need from the planning commission. So for example, if there's a desire to change the minimum lot sizes in the residential zoning districts, that's something that needs to be a conversation. Um, different uses that are allowed in different zoning districts, um, development standards as far as sidewalks, um, landscaping requirements, site screening requirements. So when, once those start coming in front of you, there'll be, there'll be more of a, a discussion on what the planning commission would like to see. But this stuff is more inform, I mean, there, there really wasn't any substantive change to anything, right? So um, there really isn't much. I, I don't need an action from planning commission tonight.
Don't need an action on adopting critical area regulations by reference?
Um, if it's, if it's something, so I don't, I don't have a formal memo or anything like that with a recommendation for that. Um, but i- if it is the planning commission's recommendation that we adopt it by reference, there, there is a, let's see here, fine.
Prefer to have uh, a couple more members here.
Yeah.
That.
Yeah, let me, yeah, of course. And that's, there, there's no problem there. Um, yeah, let me share. One second here. So let me, because the, the state did create a guidance document. So I, I kind of want to, I didn't, I wasn't planning, I mean, it's something that we can discuss and go through, but it, this is essentially what, what the, oop, sorry.
We're wore out.
Yeah. It's seven thirty. It's a Thursday night. We can, we'll put a We can, we'll put a pin in it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else that we need to bring before the planning mission?
Not at this time. I will let you know that, um, if you recall that Lux subdivision, um, the mayor decided that, um, and after a conversation with myself and the city engineer and the city attorney, that we didn't want to defer any of those street improvements or water and sewer lines, kind of like what you were getting at, because it ends up being put on the shoulders of whomever buys those lots. So there was a, a letter that was written essentially informing the developer that the, the anticipated expectation is going to be that those improvements be made prior to final plat approval.
Any more questions, anything else before the planning?
I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Thanks Byron.
Have a good night.